Okay, let's begin. I want to start by welcoming our candidates. Candidate and current council member Mario Scalotti, current council member Peter White, and Mr. Paul Doring, welcome.
Thank you.
So this segment is going to consist also of three parts. We will begin with opening statements, and then we will ask questions from the chamber, followed by questions from the community, and then you will be given an opportunity to make a closing statement. Because you drew names earlier, we are going to follow the format as a result of who drew what position. So the opening statement, we will begin with Mr. Doring, but before we start, I just want to make mention that we are open to -- oh, I'm sorry, it is Mr. Scalotti, forgive me. Thank you. I want to mention that we are soliciting questions from the community, so if you are here in the audience, or if you're watching at home, please do submit some questions. They are here and they're available to answer whatever it is that you want to ask about. Again, we ask that the questions be non-redundant, that they be business economic related, and that they not be on a topic where they would have to recuse themselves. And so with, I think, the housekeeping notes prepared, oh, here is the telephone number if you are at home and you want to text in a question, 707-333-2335. And I believe that that number will be repeated on your screen throughout the debate. So let's begin with opening statements with council member Mario Scalotti.
Thank you so much to the chamber for hosting this forum tonight. I'm so happy that it's televised, and I know that a lot of friends and supporters are at home watching. I just want to thank you guys for tuning in. I wanted just to briefly say a little bit about me as a candidate, and also my relationship and my love for business. My family moved here straight to St. Helena from Italy in 1901, so we've been here 113 years. I was born at the Adventist Health Sanitarium in 1980. My family has been operating businesses on Main Street for 35 years consistently without closing. I attended St. Helena High School, where I shared the great privilege of being president of my class, along with Del Britton, whose picture's back there in the class of '57. I studied at University of Virginia Business and Architecture, and it was in Further Studies at UC Berkeley that I fell in love really with business, and specifically my fascination with Asia, and simultaneously with wine. Growing up in Napa Valley, I was able to preside over an auction house and sold $25 million worth of rare and collectible wines into Asia with 20 trips to Asia. And today, I'm an active businessman in the community. I recently just closed equity funding for a vineyard development project that's one of the most sustainable of its kind, just south of the Oberrish property. And being involved in such a large project now for the first time as a young person, I've been absolutely, in a way, struck with gratitude about the importance of marketing, the importance of communication, and the importance of being able to come together as a team, and to thoroughly execute a plan, and to thoroughly follow through with the activities that relate to, you know, to really being able to do business as best as possible, and also while considering all of the sentiments of stakeholders that are involved. I've enjoyed serving the community in the city council, and I look forward to the rest of the debate.
Thank you, Councilmember Scalotti. Councilmember White, your opening statement.
Okay. Well, I would first like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting us here. I have lived in St. Helena for over 50 years. I attended local schools and married my wife here 42 years ago, raised our two children here in St. Helena, who also went to local schools. I received my Bachelor of Science degree from California State University Sacramento in Business Administration with a concentration in real estate and land use affairs. I have been the CEO of several companies. I have been a real estate broker for over 34 years, and a licensed general contractor for 40 years. Now I have a consulting business doing project management and acting as owner's representative. And my most recent project has been the construction management of the new St. Helena Montessori School, which has occupied me for the last eight years. For two years, I've been on the, I was on the Planning Commission, four years on the City Council. I've been your representative to the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, and a representative on the Watershed Information Conservation Conservancy. If elected, I look forward to serving you and supporting our citizens and businesses as we move forward with implementing our new general plan and looking at our investments into our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Doring.
Thank you, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum. My name is Paul Doring, and I am a challenger. It's nice that both city council members talked about their families and their backgrounds, because we often forget that we in business are also real people and human beings. We have our own aspirations, our families, our children, our hopes and dreams for our community, and so that's what is important. That's where we find the common ground. Most of the merchants on the downtown, in downtown St. Helena live here. I see them all. They are human beings first, business people second, and we always have to keep that in mind, and that's where we come together as a community, when we take away labels and move forward as human beings and work on one team. I'm married to Cara Doring, who's an RLS teacher here in St. Helena. I have two children who go to the public schools, Lucas and Leah, ages 13 and now 17, my son. I have so many aspirations for them, and that's why I'm running for city council. I've been a lawyer for 26 years. I've been married to Cara for 26 years. I've had all kinds of experience in elective office, in government, in business, but really my strength is collaborating, working collegially with all walks of life, from all viewpoints, to really sincerely and in good faith work on behalf of this community, and that's what I pledge to do.
Thank you, candidates. Before we move forward with our first question, I just wanted to briefly describe what the format will be, because there are three of you. We are going to ask a question. One of you will have two minutes to answer it, oh, I'm sorry, three minutes to answer, followed by a two-minute response by the opposite candidates, and then ending with a two-minute response by the candidate who was first asked the question. Is that clear? And then we will rotate. Okay. So let's begin with our first question, which is for candidate, Peter? Okay. Councilmember White. And the question is, well, it says Peter. You are the veteran on the council, and you seem to be running on your experience. Can you cite actions that you have taken that were directly beneficial to the business community? And can you give us a to-do business list for your next term to enhance St. Helena's overall economy should you be elected?
Well, I look at the support that we've given the chamber and the downtown area. We just recently gave the chamber a $50,000 grant to do some economic development study, and also we raised the cap, or took away the cap, on the formula that the chamber gets every year from the city council. I think going forward, we need to really take a look at what the issues are and the needs are downtown. And I was intrigued by one of the questions that we had in our questionnaire that had to do with the Business Improvement District, that really made me start to think about what the benefits of actually implementing a Business Improvement District, and what all the advantages would be for our downtown area. So I think going forward, we really should look at that and kind of wrap our heads around it. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Doring, you have the opportunity for a two-minute follow-up.
Thank you. Well, having not served on the city council, it's a little difficult for me to respond to that directly, but I can certainly say that I've been representing businesses, business interests, for 26 years as both a trial attorney, a business attorney, and a land use attorney. I fully understand the needs of business people in this community throughout the Napa Valley. One of the fundamental things that our businesses need is certainty and predictability. I know that. I'm a trial lawyer. I see all the problems that come out of the lack of certainty. I see all the problems in land use that come out of the lack of predictability. And the one thing that the city council has not done, unfortunately, is complete its general plan. And planning provides certainty, not only to the residents, but to the businesses, and businesses feel uncertain. I've talked to many business owners who feel discouraged right now because they don't know where our city's going. They don't have confidence in our planning staff, and they feel uncertain about their investments and their concerns in the community. So we really need to move forward rapidly and complete the general plan, provide the certainty, and as soon as we complete that general plan, we need to move directly to the zoning codes, because that's another area where we provide certainty, predictability for our businesses. We need to move forward quickly on that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scalotti, you have two minutes to respond.
Yes, thank you. I think the single most important thing that I've been able to vote on while being on the council for the last two years was supporting the Los Alcoas Project. When they had to go back to U.S. Bank to secure their financing, they came to the city council to ask us if we could cover any shortfalls with TOT that they could defer payment of TOT tax. I voted in favor of that because they needed to close, they needed that little extra boost to make their financiers happy, and as a result, the place is breaking ground. And that hotel on three acres, it's literally an infill-style hotel, is a $55 million project that's coming into our community that's going to make us around three and a half, sorry, $1.5 million in TOT tax. So when I reflect on what we've done in the council, we've actually, we've finished the general plan, and we've handed it to the Planning Commission. So anyone out there that's watching too, you're going to hear this a million times in the rest of this campaign, but we've done our work, and we've sent it to the Planning Commission, and we're waiting for it to return so we can do the final approval. I just want to get that kind of clear. So I'd say that supporting Los Alcoas was the thing I'm most proud of as far as in the business community. I can tell you for sure that the turnover in City Hall is, in my opinion, in a handful of categories, a really good thing, because it took the men against two years to get through what they just got approved on, and that's unacceptable, in my opinion, to do business on Main Street. So one of the things I'm really excited about is continuing, if I can be on the council again and earn my seat back in this election. I want to continue to improve customer service for all of business, not just on Main Street, but throughout the city. I mean, we need to be business-friendly to people that want to make a serious investment in our community, especially if it's going to net us more than simple sales tax, especially if it's going to be something as substantial as TOT revenue.
Thank you. Councilmember White, you have an opportunity for a two-minute follow-up on this subject.
Okay, thank you. I think one of the things that I've been able to provide as a city council member also is being consistent with our process, and having that pragmatic look at the projects that have come before us, or different issues that have come to the city council. Having the business background, I really feel for the merchants and the commercial community, and I think, you know, it's my ability to be able to meet with both citizens of the city of St. Helena and the business community, and feel comfortable in both arenas. And I'd like to move forward with that.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next question, and this will go to Mr. Doring.
Thank you.
We'll begin with Mr. Doring. In the candidate's forum last week at the library, you stated that you wanted to protect our neighborhoods from negative market forces. Can you elaborate on what that means and what actions you intend to take to accomplish that?
What I am concerned about is what we're all concerned about, residents and businesses alike. We all talk about the importance of maintaining our small-town, authentic rural community, and that includes, in my view, most importantly, our neighborhoods. That includes our local-serving businesses. I've been walking around St. Helena and learning more about the community that I've lived in for 14 years. We have some vibrant, fantastic neighborhoods: Cronella, Vineyard Avenue, Silvainer, Vineyard Valley, El Bonita. What I'm talking about is making sure that those neighborhoods continue to exist as neighborhoods, and that we avoid commercial intrusion in those neighborhoods by, for example, passing or amending a small winery ordinance that would allow wineries adjacent to those neighborhoods to have public events, to not have a residence attached to the use, because that goes away from the concept of neighborhoods. That becomes more commercial, and I'm really concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the potential expansion of vacation rentals in the neighborhoods. We have a place for wineries. We have a place for hotels. We have a place for B&amp;Bs and those kinds of things, ins. It's not in our neighborhoods. We call them neighborhoods for a reason. They're neighborhoods, and we need to protect them, and so I would not have voted for the Small Winery Ordinance as it read. I would have taken the Greg Pitts approach and compromised on that and said, "We can do that on Highway 29. That's a place for wineries," not in our precious neighborhoods. People come here because they love our authentic, small-town environment. It includes our neighborhoods, and we need to focus on those through the general plan, through zoning, and through the policies we make.
Thank you. Councilmember Scalotti, you have an opportunity to respond, two minutes, please.
I think that Paul's comments are kind of obvious. I mean, of course, we want to protect our neighborhoods, but is, you know, the old St. Helena Olive Oil Company, I mean, is that an infringement in the neighborhood where I can go down and get a salami there? Should that be closed? Like, no. I mean, there are certain things that have been grandfathered in, and that kind of are just in the fabric of our communities. I'm proud that I voted for the winery ordinance, because it was, in my mind, an attempt to be able to lock in value in viticulture, all right? Specifically supporting the wine business in a way that locks a piece of land into a higher-value tranche that can then not be converted to houses. And I know that sounds a little bit maybe tricky to grasp, but when you go to places that are as famous as we are, like Pomerol and Saint Emileon, and these places in Bordeaux, when you take a block of land and you make it an estate, and that wine is vinified on that site, it becomes so valuable that it's not going to get turned into houses. And frankly, that's what I think is important. Now, absolutely agree that I'd like to reintroduce some better version of that that gives protection, perhaps, to immediate neighbors. That became very clear, especially on the Madrona and Scott Street folks, that, essentially whose views would be directly impinged upon, and that's infringed upon, and that's a tough call. And I agree that there should be some tool and some method to not technically allow that to happen, to really get in people's backyards. But I'm actually proud of the winery ordinance, and I'd like to actually introduce a different version of it that protects immediate neighbors, but that still allows small wineries to happen in our other agricultural lands, which are varied and large in the city. That's my hope and attempt to lock in agriculture where we can, when we can. As far as the short-term rentals go in the neighborhoods, the ones that we've passed, the 25 we passed, some people use them, some people don't quite use them. I actually, I'm excited to see what comes up in the next year review, to see what the impacts really are. We're still learning.
Councilmember White, two minutes.
The Small Winery Ordinance revision was a great learning experience that, you know, we began that process because of a number of exemptions that were made by the Planning Commission, by the council, and not just our council, but councils before, where if you read the Small Winery Ordinance, it has a restriction of not being able to have any market events at the wineries. Well, it was felt by a number of wineries, or a few wineries, that asked for exemptions, that they could have marketing events at their small wineries. So we opened up, or the Planning Commission opened up, the idea of changing the ordinance because there had already been a few exemptions, and if you're going to keep making exemptions to an ordinance, you really should take a look at whether the ordinance itself is right for the community. So there was 10 public hearings and a couple of stakeholder meetings, and then at the very last hour, all of a sudden, it seemed like the neighborhoods woke up. And I applaud, you know, that the neighborhoods started to get involved, or the citizens started to get involved, and I think it was prudent for the city council to drop it at that point. And someday, if we get some more requests for exemptions, then we should, again, take a look at that ordinance and try and do a little bit better outreach. I don't know how, but 10 public hearings should be just about enough outreach. But I guess that's the way St. Helena is, that you have to watch out for the 11th hour.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doring, for a final comment, two minutes, please.
Thank you. Some of the things I actually agree with, and I'm sympathetic to trying new things, but one of the things, we have a little bit of a failure of memory about what happened during those meetings, and it's important to know that two of the council members tried their very best to pull the other three into a viewpoint of bifurcating the process, looking out for the existing wineries that were here and having problems economically given the recession, you know, in terms of, you know, understanding the direct-to-consumer demands on those existing wineries. And I'm not suggesting that we go back and undo the existing wineries that are already here, no. But Councilmember Kroll and Councilmember Pitts suggested a compromise version that would allow the ordinance to go into effect on Highway 29, and to also look at existing wineries. And they lost on that boat. They couldn't get any cooperation, in my view, or sense of collaboration, or sense of working through those issues. Those two members represented the neighborhoods also. If I was on the city council, I would have stopped my process immediately and said, "Oh, listen to what these folks are saying. This is a good idea. We could have passed a decent ordinance right then and there without having folks go to the extent of doing a petition." If we had only listened and reached out to other viewpoints in the community, including those two council members. So that was something that I would have done. That's something I've done while I was on the, excuse me, the Calistoga City Council, all kinds of different viewpoints. We reached out, and we found common ground, and that's what I pledge to do. No matter who gets elected here, whether it's, you know, anyone, mayors, I pledge to do that. Let's find the common ground, and we could have done that. That was a perfect example of one where we could have done that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to question number three, and this is going to begin with Councilmember Begins Mario. At several council and public meetings, you've offered fresh ideas that you've garnered from other communities on how to improve our town and economy. Can you elaborate on exactly what are you going, what are you doing to bring any of those into fruition for us?
It's a good question. I think that the actual time it takes to bring those into fruition is exactly why I really want to run for reelection and keep my seat, because there are some amazing, amazing things we can still do as a community that I think are just going to be an incredibly bright future for us as a community. One of the things that I would bring up in council meetings is that I've become kind of friendly with some of the council people in Telluride, Colorado, and I've learned how they've taken their revenue streams of TOT tax, and also what is called an RETT tax, which is a real estate transfer tax, and they have literally been able to build affordable housing for themselves as a city with no subsidies from the state or federal government, and they're able to create incredible benefits for the citizens of the community by harnessing those specific types of tax dollars that are visitor-based. And it's kind of like awesome jujitsu. It's like they come at you with a lot of visitors, and they take all of that money and put it right back into the community, and because it's going to happen anyway. St. Helena is the core of the most famous wine region on planet Earth, and by far the best marketed wine region on planet Earth. So this is not going away anytime soon. We're here because we love it, but we have an opportunity to create real economic sustainability by embracing a handful of the right revenue streams. I outlined a few in the questionnaire. I'm a huge fan of TOT, because it's a straight 12% that we get to keep, and the visitors are happy. They can take their cars off the street and quit clogging up our streets, and then actually walk into town and spend money, and then go home, and we get to keep all those taxes. I'm a huge fan of that. I don't know how many rooms is totally appropriate. Looking at Carl's project the other night, it looks good, but if Carl just wants to flip it, you know, I don't know if I'm in support of that. I'd like to make sure something gets built, if it's proper and quality, that's going to bring those TOT dollars to help the beautification of our community, the revitalization of downtown. We need money to do it. So we talk about all these great things. Well, I can dream all I want, but if I don't have, if we don't have the money to do it, all the planning and anything you want to even dream of is not possible. So TOT is obviously one great way to do it. The other thing that some of these communities, luxury communities, have done is imposed a real estate transfer tax. The only way to do that in the state of California is to become a charter city. There are very good cities that have done this. I mean, Palo Alto's done it, you know, Carmel's a charter city. I think Napa's even a charter city. It's a legal process that we have to go through, and it would allow us to charge 1% on every sale of a piece of real estate. If we sell them $100 million of the real estate, it's an extra $1 million a year, and it's kind of just going to go away in the amortization of that guy's mortgage, especially if it's a second home buyer. So those are a couple of things that I'd really like to work toward in the next four years, and I want to earn my seat back.
Thank you. Councilmember White, you have an opportunity to rebut that. The question was specifically to Councilmember Scalotti, but if you have, you know, some further input on creative ideas, feel free to comment.
Well, having grown up here in St. Helena with the mantra of, "We don't want to be caramelized," or "We don't want to be some other community," or "We don't want to be Yount Vegas," it's hard for me to kind of put my head around, you know, being like somebody else from somewhere else. I think we can take a look at models from other communities and get ideas, but we are a unique town in itself, or a city in itself, and I think we have our own character and culture, and opportunities that we can draw from our own citizens and our own businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Doring, again, you have the same opportunity. You can rebut any of the previous statements, or you can provide us with some creative ideas.
Do you mind repeating that question for me, please?
Okay, well, the question to Mario was, where is it? At several council and public meetings, you offered fresh ideas from other communities on how to improve our town and economy. Can you elaborate on exactly what you would do to bring any of those into fruition?
Okay. Well, with all due respect to the council members, they do have fresh ideas, but I haven't seen any action on the ideas. One of the dilemmas for Councilmember Scalotti is that his office is right in the heart of downtown, so he can't speak to the issues that are most important to the downtown merchants. As you all know, he's issues that are most important to the downtown merchants. As you all know, he's had to step down many times on the most important, critical issues that are facing the city council, and that is the diversity of the downtown. And it's not, I don't want to suggest anything bad or ulterior. It's simply that he has an office space downtown. But it is an important concern for the business community, because I've talked to many members of the business community who feel that they are not fully represented. Not only is it a matter of not voting on a project, you can't even speak to the project. You can't lobby folks for a particular point of view. You really can't talk about your particular project. So I don't have those conflicts. One idea that I would have very quickly is to look at our existing hotels. Look at those existing footprints and work with the chamber to do a survey and find out who, which of those existing hotels could expand, even if it's five, six, seven units. If we got four or five, like Wydown, Grand View, or the Los Alcoas Project, you know, all, there's several in, in town, Southbridge, and convince them that we could develop some incentives for them to just basically add more keys without changing the footprint, we would have immediate generation of revenue right now. And that, that's much easier to do than try to build a whole new project. We could get 40, 50 units, but that takes reaching out to the chamber, the chamber then reaching out to those businesses, and actually asking them, "How could we help you get that done?" And that's what I would do. And that's money. That is TOT, and it's not easy, but it's, it's a lot easier than waiting for a hotel to be built.
Thank you. Councilmember Scalotti, you have a two-minute opportunity to respond.
Sure. I've actually, I've actually thought about giving up my office a couple of times because it's probably the greatest view on Main Street, but it's, it is something I've been honestly, seriously considering, even perhaps just handing it over to, to, to a relative. Because here's the thing, I'm, I'm absolutely able to participate in any visioning, any talks about diversification of how we want to approach business on Main Street, if we want to, you know, put any planning beyond the free market into Main Street. That's absolutely a conversation that I can be part of on committees from a, from a holistic sense. So that is, that's mythology that he was saying. Sometimes I do have to accuse myself if it's within 500 feet, but the, the, the majority of the meat and potatoes issues that we're going to be faced are going to be resort, are going to be resort locations that are well beyond any, any zone that I'd have to accuse myself from. And that's going to happen within the next four years, for sure. There are going to be debates about this, and there are going to be a lot of discussions about it. I think the most important thing that I just want to, I want to say again, is that we need to create new revenue streams, or we will die on the vine, period. We have an $8.3 million budget, and it is, it is pathetic compared to what some of our neighboring cities get just from TOT tax. I mean, St., Calistoga gets $3 million in TOT. Ours is $1.5 million. I'm not advocating becoming Yount Vegas. Seriously, it is Yount Vegas, and I, and that's why I don't choose to live there. But, but beyond TOT, the only other things that I can see would be this real estate transfer tax exploration, and potentially some type of amazing heritage-quality building on Adams Street that could generate real money for us, for events, that could be financed like, almost like a traditional commercial building. And that's, those are, those are a handful of things that I think we can explore, that, that can all cooperate in conjunction with really strengthening us as a city, so we can take care of our business, take care of infrastructure, and take care of our people.
Thank you, Councilmember Scalotti. So we've asked each of you specific questions. We have one final question from the chamber, and it's a general question for all three of you. In your opinion, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember White, we will begin with you, and here's the question. In your opinion, what is the appropriate role of the Chamber of Commerce in local issues, and how actively will you include the chamber in your decision-making?
Well, I think the chamber is very important in all local issues. I think, I, I believe the chamber, because it's made up of citizens here in town, is just as much a resident, just as much a part of the community as, as our neighborhoods and, and because you, you do live in our neighborhoods. I don't see any distinction. I think that, that the chamber should, should be a participant, especially in, you know, any of our economic development issues, and, and especially moving forward, trying to, to get more revenue into the city coffers. I, I agree with Mario that, that a $9 million budget for this, this city is not enough to even maintain the infrastructure that we already have. Our infrastructure has fallen apart over the last, well, it's fallen apart. And, and we need to do something about it. So the chamber is, and, and our downtown businesses, and our service commercial areas, and our industrial areas are, are economic engine, and that's where most of our income comes from. So you've got to be part of it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. Mr. Doring, a follow-up, two minutes, please.
Thank you. So, you know, I started out my law practice in, in Calistoga a long time ago, and I still have my law practice there. And I immediately joined the Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the, the Calistoga Chamber of Commerce for 17 years. I fully understand the nature of the chambers of commerce, what their obligations are. I served two years as a director. I learned quite a bit. I have a fair amount of knowledge about businesses because I represent so many throughout the Napa Valley, but it was really an eye-opener to me. One of the things I can say now is that I think this chamber is severely underfunded. It cannot do all the work that we want it to do. And that's not an attempt to pander to the chamber. I know what the, the budget is in Calistoga, and they are using great funds to do great things. Frankly, I'm very proud of the service I had on the chamber in Calistoga, very proud to work with Chris Canning, who's the executive director and the mayor of Calistoga. Calistoga's been doing some great things with a lot of funding. And so I'm willing to sit with any, any liaison team, government liaison relations team, or anything like that, sit with you, meet with you, share ideas, be, be that connection to the, the council. We also need a liaison or, or committee that deals with residents, so that we can tone down the, this notion of residents versus businesses. I can bridge that gap because I did it in Calistoga. Ultimately, residents favored Solage, which was a controversial, controversial project. And no, there is no controversy about Solage. We built 25 units of affordable housing with the Solage project. The residents are generally happy, you know, but they had, we had the same, their same issues there in terms of preserving the small-town nature of the community. But I'm, I'm ready, willing, and able to meet with any organization in the chamber. I believe in chambers of commerce. You're human beings. You're people who live here. You have a stake in our community.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scalotti, follow-up?
Yeah, from the time that I can remember as a child, you know, the Chamber of Commerce has been very important in my life, is, I mean, talking about business around the dinner table growing up. And my, my parents, I remember getting to go to Saint Emilion with Audi Hain with the Chamber of Commerce, learning about, you know, what are they doing in France? What are we doing over here? You know, the Chamber of Commerce plays an incredibly vital role in our community. And, and the thing is, is that we, we all enjoy this community for not just the sunshine. We enjoy it because it functions as, as, as an interlocking set of services that we all love. I like going to Farmstead and having a fresh burger right there, even if it's crowded, you know, and, and it's impacting the street parking a little bit. I mean, I still love it, you know, and, and we've been here 100 years. The, the Chamber of Commerce, in my opinion, I, I want to see, and I want to see a way to increase our budget as a city, which it's not going to unless we get creative and figure out how we can increase the budget, so that we can actually do more things and fund, you know, and, and fund better activities together with the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, festivals, just the intrinsic authenticity that we have as a community, and everything that's wine-related. I mean, we can be doing so many things that embrace the public and the citizens, celebrating what we have here as our heritage. But business and taxes is what allows that to happen. Otherwise, we ask for handouts, or we go into debt. Come on, those are the choices. You know, pass a big bond, go into debt, or, you know, stay the same. So I'm, I'm a huge advocate. I'd love to, I'd love to actually figure out a way to budget in somebody who's an economic advisory consultant. You know, we've heard comments about needing a water consultant. I agree. But we need someone who can actually help, help consult us on, on finding, you know, the best, the best businesses to come into town. And, oh, I have to stop. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember White, final comment, two minutes, please.
Well, I think, I think the record of this council has been supportive of the Chamber of Commerce. I would also like to see further investment into, into our economic engine, which is the downtown core and all of our commercial endeavors. And, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce is going to be forth, I mean, forthright and, and in front of our marketing of St. Helena to, to be able to increase our revenue streams and, and to keep us viable, and to be able to pay for our infrastructure and, and all the rest of it. We have visitors that are already here, already coming here. We need to capture those visitors and, and have them stay, get out of their cars, and, and participate more in our community.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. That concludes the first segment of this portion of the debate. We're going to take an eight-minute break. Again, we are continuing to accept questions. Oh, we have a lot of questions that came in. Great. Well, apparently we have a lot of people that are really interested in what you gentlemen are talking about. So we're going to take an eight-minute break, and we'll see you back here shortly.
Thank you.